Okay, ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to call the Pembroke School Committee meeting for Tuesday, September 16th, 2025 to order. Again, this meeting is being recorded. Would you all please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'd like to go a little off-agenda here for one moment. As a committee, we've decided we'd like to make a statement based on the incidents of the last couple of weeks, not only nationally but locally. And here's what we have, and basically it says, "In light of recent tragedies that have shaken communities across our nation, the Pembroke School Committee wishes to speak not about any individual, but about an urgent issue facing all of us. Traditionally, we reserve moments of silence for those with deep ties to Pembroke, reflecting our commitment to honoring members of our own community. Today, we recognize the widespread grief and concern in response to a troubling surge in political violence, acts that have shaken communities and eroded our sense of safety across the country. The Pembroke School Committee condemns all forms of violence, whether in schools, politics, or throughout our communities. There is no place for violence in a democracy or in environments where young people seek to learn and grow in safety. Our district's vision is grounded in ensuring a safe, supportive, and respectful learning environment for all. Each one of us is born with inherent worth, so we treat everyone with dignity, no matter what. We believe this principle is fundamental to education and to peaceful communities. We ask all community members to join us in rejecting violence, in embracing compassion, listening to one another, and treating everyone with respect and dignity, both online and in person. In doing so, we show our students and one another the courage, compassion, and dignity needed not only to heal and grow together, but to build a future where these values can be seen and passed down." Thank you very much. Okay, public comments. Anyone here to speak? Anyone sign in? That's an easy one, then. Acknowledge your scheduled visitors. Well, huh, do we introduce the dog first?
I forgot to put Sasha on here.
I was gonna say, who gets top billing here? Chief McDonald, always an honor to have you in the building. Officer Simmons, thank you so much. And to the lovely Sasha, thank you for gracing us with your presence. You guys wanna come up to the microphone, or whatever works for you guys?
I think we met last year if there was only one new person.
That's Katrina.
Hi. And I think last, yeah. I think last year when we met, Mary Beth was kind of new at it, and the school committee had said if there's anything you ever need, or anything they can help with, come back to them. So, you know, Allison did suggest that maybe we make this an annual thing, and have you all come in and just start the school year.
Sasha found a vet in the audience.
I was like, oh, she's good on me.
You're in good hands. Paige will take good care of you.
Well, I think as a conduct for the schools, you get feedback and ideas are what we're doing right, what we're not doing right, what we can do. We'd like to hear from you guys, too.
I get the most positive feedback about Sasha, definitely the dog, and it's no offense to you. Also, people love you, but I think they're just, you know, always excited to see Sasha. So, always feeling you're a part of the community is what I've heard from everybody.
Yeah, I think the visibility that she helps bring to the police department and the kids in the schools is really important, and I know everybody gets excited to see her. How could you not? When it comes to like just the overall, like, everything, you know, I think it's a lot of the same things that we hear all the time, and again, learning lane, over and over and over again. I think it's the one kind of side that there's no one fix to, but at least from our, what I hear a lot is learning lane being...
Mary Beth, do you wanna talk to them about the new project that you've started on learning lane?
Yeah, I've heard.
Principal Talbot?
So, the past week, myself, Principal Talbot, we've been talking with for our student to try to make...
Can you move to the microphone, please? Thank you.
Trying to make especially the afternoon dismissal a little bit easier, obviously with the one-way in and out, there's no easy fix, especially when you have underclassmen parking across the street, school buses coming in, parents coming in, kids going out. So, we've been trying to implement when we go out towards where the student law exit is, we'll hold the students that are going across the street to try to get one big group, cross them all together, hold the traffic at that time. And I'm sure any of you have driven up that you see the kids dart out between the buses. It's just, we've had close calls before, we're trying to minimize that as much as possible. Obviously, there'll be some people that are upset that they can't park, they're not supposed to park on learning lane by that area. We've been trying to drill that home with some of the parents, too. That might just take a little bit of time. Everybody wants to get in and out as quick as possible, I get it, but at the end of the day, we're trying to make it as safe as possible. So, it'll take a little bit. We've been out there in the afternoons, just trying to make that run a little bit smoother, maybe trying to get the buses in a little sooner, too. That, I think, would help as well. But obviously, with all the schools, it's staggered times, we know that. It's not a perfect system, and we'll try to do the best we can with it.
Thank you so much.
So far, it does work easier keeping the kids and just doing a couple of big groups at a time. Not everyone's happy at all times, but...
Yeah, there was some solid feedback about closing the Habimach gate there to that basketball court.
Yep. That didn't help because that was just one more exit in and out of people, just trying to sneak out. And you'll see the parents, like, even try to pull in the senior loft there to try to pick the kids up. Everybody's in a rush, so it's just, we try to ask for a little bit more patience at that time, and everyone will get out safely and done with their day.
That was a really big issue for us last year, and, you know, David and I even talked about it at long-term planning, trying to come up with a solution. So, we really appreciate your partnership with that and trying to find a way to make everything safer for the kids.
And even Principal Talbot's been very good, too, sending out the email blasts. Like, I get them myself, so I know the parents are being informed about it, like, where they're supposed to be, where they're not. It's gonna take a little bit of time just to make everybody kind of understand why we're doing this, and it might be an inconvenience for a few minutes, but long-term, it's the best idea for everyone.
Absolutely. Thank you so much.
And if you notice, we put a traffic sign on the lane. It only, not to educate your speed, but we get feedback through the cloud, and we know how many cars go down the street, what time, what the speeds are, what the average speed is, what the high speed is.
What's the highest speed?
It's not market science because we know when the students get out. So, we do have cars on Habimach Street, enforcing the traffic there as high as speed.
Oh, that's great.
Do we get that data at some point? Like, I don't know.
Anytime you request it, you can shoot it like that.
Okay. That'd be interesting, because I know separately, but again, with traffic, you know, I know at town meeting, we pass adding the language for the cameras, and I'm hoping that it's a discussion that we're able to have that would, it's not the same thing, but it would add to, you know, the police's ability to help with safety of cars passing the buses, too.
Yeah, anytime, just request it. It won't have the smiley face like the one in front of us.
I know. Why did they get it? We don't, the kids might like that.
We'll try to make it like that.
Maybe you can do an angry face when it gets too high.
We'll do it, too.
Just issues the ticket. How about if it just prints the ticket?
I think that would be data that could be useful to give parents of student drivers to know, like, you know, I don't know.
It could also help with traffic flow, potentially, if we know, like, the times that there are the most people coming in. You probably know that anyways from sitting there, but...
Seven twenty.
Yeah, like, if there's a way that we can ask, like, parents to come slightly earlier, or slightly, whatever that looks like, I feel like that could help us potentially, too.
Yeah, absolutely.
The other part is that it's a challenge because people want to set their ways when it comes to that, so the real answer to that is if you had, like, different access and egress in that school area, not just one-way in, one-way out. It's not happening, but that's another way to kind of resolve some of that. As far as we're concerned, just to kind of change direction a little bit, we'll have you in front of us. What's your thoughts on having patrol stop by schools and just do random walk-ins?
We love it.
Yeah, I think the visibility's great. I know, at least from on Habimach side, like, you know, you guys participate in the jingle jogs and those types of events, and the kids love it, so I think, you know, also, a lot of parents are involved.
Which is fine, but in the atmosphere, you're not just walk downs and things like that.
Yeah, and I think the more police staff that are familiar with the layout of our building, if there was an emergency, and because you've walked through it 20 times, you know, okay, this is where that is. And I think, you know, on top of that, for kids to see public safety officials in and not emergencies, important, too.
Yeah.
So, we, anytime, anybody's free to walk through, anytime.
And I always taught everyone private to do anything like that, but the other part of it is that we'll have active shooter training with the fire department in the spring. We try to do that every year, we like to do it twice a year, but there's money attached to that, so it's not always the ability to get the money to do that.
And what's the one rule we have, Rick?
You believe the bullets and hope to...
Pick up your rubber bullets.
In defense of that, it was just a blank...
Right, sure. Yeah, it looks the same to us, too.
But to piggyback on the Sasha thing, as far as, you know, the advantage with the school and building bridges with the students and the staff, it's actually, it comes into the station, and sometimes a lot of stress going on there. When she walks in, it's a whole different environment. She runs up and down the hall, she goes in my office.
She's exhausted.
Oh, she is. It does change, it does change the mood.
It takes a lot out of her.
So, it does help even with the offices, too.
Yeah, and as much as Allison was saying how great it is for kids, a lot of our staff look forward to seeing Sasha in the morning, and the number of teachers at the high school that have treats for her in their purses is amazing.
Well, almost like trick-or-treating through the class.
Every day's trick-or-treat, we love it.
Hundred percent.
Yes, the math, the math teachers do always have treats, it looks like, yeah.
And if you see the black dog run, it's just not a good thing.
All right, all right. Good to know.
No, we appreciate you, so we hope to just kind of have it maybe at one of the September meetings, just have you guys always come.
Awesome.
Thank you for your partnership.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys, thank you so much.
Thanks for coming, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate you.
She's on Channel 5 today, seven.
Can't wait. She's famous.
Okay, quick meeting. We have 15 minutes to get there.
We can live stream.
Any adjustments to the agenda, Erin?
There's actually just one adjustment. Under my report, A should say consideration for acceptance, not approval. You're accepting the gift.
Okay. Changed the spelling there. Any communications?
Just want to mention along the lines of the wonderful introduction that you talked about with rejecting any kind of violence, the student-led Bible study at the high school is hosting a prayer vigil after school tomorrow, so if anybody wants to go...
Where's it going to be?
It's gonna be outside where the seniors sit for lunch.
Okay.
So, if any parents or students, parents tell your students, and students are welcome, all students are welcome.
Okay. Approval of bill schedule, I don't think I've seen that come up yet.
It's not done yet.
Okay.
It's coming, David.
All right, no, I just wanted to make sure. Consideration for approval of school committee meeting minutes of August 19th, I'll take a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, so we've got a motion from Allison, second from Lavo, Katrina down to my left here. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Anyone voting present? No, we're all good. Natalie, it's unanimous. Yay, that's an honor for Patrick. There we go, superintendent's report.
Perfect. So, the first thing in my report is consideration for acceptance, the gift from the North Pembroke Elementary School PTO. So, in your packet, you have information about the gift that they gave in the amount of $11,000 to install the new water filtration systems here at North Pembroke. So, Mr. Murphy, I think he highlighted during his opening of school reports, he did write a grant to SWIG, so the school water improvement grant, and was awarded that for $18,000, and the PTO matched those funds with $11,000 so that they could install six new water filtration units around the building. And as you can imagine, the other two elementary principals, as well as our middle school and high school principal, are now very interested in the school water improvement grant, so I would expect to see some additional applications from other Pembroke schools in this funding year.
That's great.
So, do we have to vote on that?
We need to vote to accept it because of the dollar amount.
Okay, all those in favor, accepting the $11,000 grant?
I'll make a motion. Second.
Okay, we've got a motion from Sue, second from Katrina Delaney down to my right. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? All those voting present? It passes unanimous. Natalie, five-zero. Thank you very much.
The next thing in my report is for consideration for approval, some surplus materials at Habimach. So, you have in your packet a listing of some assessment materials, as well as a really old color printer in the library that no longer works and no longer connects to the network, so just a reminder that when you are deeming something surplus, you are allowing us to dispose of it in the best means possible, which, when we can, we sell things back to the vendors, we recycle, we donate, our last resort is always to throw something away, so.
Okay, I'll take a motion to remove this property.
So moved. Second.
Once again, Sue makes the motion, Katrina has our second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Anyone voting present? We're good, it's five-zero. Once again, Natalie, unanimous.
So, for fun, in your packet, I have supplied you with a copy of the rubric for the superintendent evaluation, so the fall is generally the timeline in which you would evaluate my work from last year, as we start setting goals for this year. I know that our goal-setting is a little bit off because we are embarking on the strategic plan, so, you know, that process will look a little different this time, but I do want to make sure that you all have the opportunity to evaluate me. The rubric that I shared with you, as well as the link in your packets to the DESE website that talks about the superintendent evaluation, it is a cumbersome rubric, and when you start to look at it, you will see a lot of it is not written in a language that makes sense to anybody that does not work in education. With that being said, you know, there's kind of an overview here of, like, what is your role as a school committee in this process? And your role is really to focus on the what and the why of my leadership, as opposed to the how, right? So, not the day-to-day management of the district, but the overall what and why. In addition, it's really about focusing on the outcomes of the work, not, you know, what were the process steps that were followed or not followed. I am so fortunate that mine is the only evaluation that is conducted in the public, so lucky me. But to the point I was making earlier, it is very cumbersome, and when we have done this in the past, and it's supposed to be in every two-year cycle, so every two years we have a formal evaluation, and then in the off-year, unless there's issues that you'd like to discuss, it kind of, it covers for a two-year cycle. In the past, we've identified, like, two or three specific areas that you want to look at, or else it will take you probably six months to effectively evaluate in this area. So, the last time we did this, I think we looked at fiscal systems and communication, I think, were the two, or operations management. So, I was hoping you all would want to take a look at this, spend some time looking at it, and identify potentially two or three areas that you think make the most sense for everybody to weigh in on, and then at our next meeting, if you all can come to agreement on that, then we can really start the process, so that you're not kind of working in a silo, looking at, what's that odd one that's in here? Managing information systems, if that's not something that the rest of the group wants to look at, so.
Are we allowed to appoint a person on this?
You all have to evaluate me.
Right, but is someone that can kind of lead it, for lack of a better term?
Yes, for right now, it's Natalie, so you would send her, like, your individual evaluations, and she would put them together.
Okay.
Should we, at the next meeting, just bring those two to three areas?
Yeah, I, no, I think for the next meeting, you all should have a conversation of what you think the most important two to three areas to look at for this past school year. Katrina, it'll be a little bit harder for you because you joined the committee in May, but I'm open to any feedback that you have from when you've been here so far.
Okay. Do any districts have, like, a shorter version?
No.
I was just wondering if they have, like, a Cliff Notes version or something.
So, they have revised this rubric, I think, four or five times now to make it more in line with what the work actually looks like, so this is better than what it looked like four years ago.
This is a lot better than four years ago.
But I've seen districts do it as checkboxes, so turning this rubric into meets expectations, doesn't meet expectations. That definitely checks the box for having an evaluation in public, but it doesn't give a lot of great feedback. And I think as we're kind of embarking on the strategic plan, the feedback is the part that I'm most interested in, and I honestly don't care if it aligns with what they say the standards are, if there's something that you all agree is an important thing for us to be focusing on, and it's not necessarily represented in this rubric, I'd rather do that than this.
So, is the final product basically like a write-up or a bulleted list of feedback? I just don't know what it looks like.
It can be either. So, in years past, we've had some verbose school committee members who write pages of feedback, and then we've had those that write five bullet points, and all of that is great. Before we start, I think it's fair to say that in education, the words "needs improvement" are not scary words.
Yeah.
And so, when you're talking about whether somebody's proficient or needs improvement, proficient is a very high bar, and most everybody that works in education is familiar with the fact that all of us need improvement in something, so please don't, to me, that's, I would expect to be needs improvement somewhere that, that means I still have work to do here in Pembroke. If everything was sunny and rosy and exemplary, then, you know, maybe it's time to find something else to do with my time. So, you know, please, the honest feedback is what's important. You all really have just a couple of roles as school committee members, and evaluating the superintendent is one of those, and I want to make sure that you're doing it to the extent to which you want to make those who voted for you feel proud, so.
Cool. Awesome, thank you. I just wanted to understand the process a little.
So, everybody's clear? We'll move with that.
You're gonna pick two or three areas, we're gonna decide on it at the next meeting, and then you're gonna either write an essay or write three to five bullet points.
Or an essay.
Katrina, I feel like you're an essay kind of girl.
I'm gonna do bullets just for you.
I'm pretty sure I am, too. Sorry.
Bullets or an essay?
An essay.
You should be apologizing to Natalie, not to me. The next thing under my report is just an overview of fall participation, athletic participation numbers at Pembroke High School, and it kind of dovetails with the next one. So, in your packet, you have an overview of our fall participation for our football, cheerleading, boys and girls soccer, field hockey, golf, cross-country, and volleyball. There's five years' worth of trends there in averages. Our percentage of students that are participating in a fall sport this year is about 39%. We've hovered right around 40 for the past couple of years. It is just around that number. You can see over time, there's been a bit of a shift from some sports that used to be popular, and now there's some new, more popular ones. Volleyball seems to be a very sought-after sport at Pembroke High School, so we have, for the past couple of years, experienced a very healthy group of students looking to participate in that sport, but to that end, there's not more kids than there used to be, so if there's more people interested in volleyball, it means there's more people less interested in something else. This year, that happens to be girl soccer. So, the next piece under my report you'll see is we're requesting an MIA waiver to allow eighth graders to play JV soccer. So, right now, there's 29 Pembroke High School girls that have signed up for soccer. Two of them are currently injured, but are expecting to return to play over the course of the season. So, that leaves us with 16 girls on the varsity team and 13 girls on the JV team. For anyone not familiar with high school soccer, it's 11V11, so you need 11 girls on the field at all times. Those are really tight numbers for fielding a team at both levels. So, obviously, if we can swing some of those JV players up to the varsity team in order to have a good number of students and available subs, and backfill some of those JV spots with eighth graders, it puts us in a more competitive position. Last year, we graduated 13 seniors from that team. We only have one senior this year, so I anticipate this lower number is possibly just a one-year situation that we're solving for.
How many potential eighth graders would be bumping up?
I think Brian was looking for three to five. Obviously, the season has started here, so we have invited the girls to work out with the team in the interim until this conversation can happen. So, ideally, we'd like to have 15 to 17 girls on the JV team. Right now, there's 13, so potentially three to five girls.
My main concern is, is like, the eighth graders are a bit smaller than their high school kind of...
So, they can only play JV, and...
But still, JV is equally, I mean, it's...
So, soccer is a no-contact sport?
Yes. No, I get it. I played soccer, I know that.
Right. And there is definitely a size discrepancy between some eighth graders and ninth graders. There's also some eighth graders that are bigger than some of the ninth graders that we have on the team. There are healthy girls' soccer numbers in the, in the community for the subsequent seventh, sixth, fifth, and fourth graders, so again, it's, it seems to be a one-year issue, and, you know, obviously, safety is the number-one priority, so we wouldn't be inviting students that we'd have safety concerns with to participate if size was a big, big, big concern.
So, so you have, you know, three kids that are adequately sized or whatever, and one that's a peanut or whatever, like, how do you, do you say no to the...
Yeah, so we can say no. It's not, they're not guaranteed a spot on the team. I can say with the group of girls that expressed interest and have been practicing with the team, there is no size discrepancy, so there's no concerns there.
And are there any other liability concerns that we should be aware of?
No, there's lots of teams that have eighth graders, and in any high school where eighth grade is part of the high school, those students play on the JV teams across the state, so.
Okay.
Ladies, any other questions?
Yeah, I have a couple. Do they pay the same fee that, if they were playing, like, if they were actually in ninth grade playing?
So, they play the high school athletic user fee, yes.
Okay, and then is there, you know, just looking at the numbers, there is, you know, a 2% drop. It's not dramatic, but it is the lowest of the five years. Is there any thought that this could be because of the higher fee, or have we not heard, like, has there been feedback?
So, you're looking at the enrollment as a 2% drop, the participation as a 1% drop?
Okay.
Yeah. No, we haven't, there's a handful of families that have reached out, as we've had in years past, about a different pay structure or a waiver, and, you know, the athletic office works directly with those families and students, so.
Okay.
We have not removed anyone from a team due to failure to pay an athletic user.
And then for transportation, the eighth graders would be trans, have to get to the high school?
So, they ride the bus over.
Right, and that's part.
Yeah, we identify the bus number that they can ride over from the middle school at the end of the day.
Okay, and then, yeah, okay. That's it.
Katrina?
No.
Oh, Katrina, all good?
No questions.
Okay. Okay, number 10, subcommittee updates.
You have to get the vote approved.
Oh, approve, I'm sorry.
No worries.
Consideration approved, we had a motion for the eighth grade waiver.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Katrina Delaney make the motion, Allison second, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? abstained? It's five-zero, Natalie, it's unanimous. Thank you very much, ladies.
Subcommittees, so, last year, I think, was the first time in a while that we had sent any members of the school committee to the Massachusetts Association of School Committee, two years, sorry, conference, and I know there's some interest for folks to go again this year, so last year, you all named a delegate to represent the committee. There are, I think, two sessions that you can go to and vote, and the rest of the conference is open to anybody, but there are a couple of items that ask for local school committees to vote on them. Once you select your delegate, we can do the research and figure out what the ideas or the topics are and bring them back to you all, so you can weigh in on whether or so you can weigh in on whether or not something the school committee can ever.
Give like quick background, so basically, MASCE comes up, what they have listed their priorities that they are advocating for. So part of the process of what the delegate does is they're our voice for representation of what MASCE is voting on. So that's what we did last year. I was the delegate, and it's basically, you know, sitting in a room where the, the different officials from MASCE are going up and, you know, discussing them, and, you know, there's some questions from the floor and whatnot. But it's a fairly straightforward process. They do have, it's kind of like a town meeting almost where they can't have people observing, but they sit in different spots so they're not voting and whatnot. But I do think it's important for us to send somebody. I know, I'm registered, I think Sue, you're registered, and Katrina registered. So I think there's at least three of us going this year.
I'd be happy to be the delegate, but some other people might be interested, so.
I mean, I'd be happy to be the delegate as well. But either way, like, I think either one of us, and, you know, I think it's worth mentioning also that our own Katrina Delaney is actually going to be
Oh, yeah.
holding one of the talks, which I think is fantastic. So she's going to be, what is your topic again?
It's basically about data and looking at student achievement. I'll be presenting from somebody else in the Dixbury School Committee and the Educator to Career Pathways data hub.
Yeah, so I think it's fantastic that, you know, so either way.
I need it wouldn't overlap.
I'll double-check the schedule, but I don't think that it would. But I think now that the schedule's fully out, I'll double-check.
I haven't seen the MASCE, yeah, but I think there's somewhere this form that once we, it needs to be sent to them so that they know what badge to give you.
Yeah, totally.
So I'm, if Katrina wants to do it, I'm fine with that. Do you want to be the?
I'll be the alternate, yeah.
Yeah, and I'll double-check that for the next meeting to make sure that there's no overlap.
If there's an overlap, then I'll just do it.
That's perfect, yeah.
Sounds good.
Ladies, that's very impressive, thank you so much, and congratulations being a presenter.
Oh, yeah, thanks.
That's a lot of fun. Budget Subcommittee.
So Budget Subcommittee has met twice since the school committee has met this previous time. The topics at Budget Subcommittee, because we're not really knee-deep in fiscal year '27 budget yet, have really been talking about what would the priorities for the school committee be if we were to be exploring an operational override for the town of Pembroke. So obviously, there's a whole bunch of conversations that are happening associated with vocational education, but at the same time, making sure that we are advocating for the appropriate funding for our five schools and our students that choose to remain here if vocational is still an option. I know that Bill has had some conversations at the Select Board level around an operational override for the town of Pembroke. I know that he has not necessarily spoken specifically about dollar amounts associated with that override. But as a subcommittee, we're looking at what are the priorities that we would like to bring to this committee to talk about to move forward if there was the potential for an override. Some of the items that we have begun to discuss center around class size, supports for classrooms, whether that's paraprofessionals, interventionists. We had a good start of a conversation about fees. And, you know, is the conversation of an override an opportunity to roll back some of our fees that we've had to up in the past couple of years because of budgetary reasons? Or is this the time where we have a family total fee, just kind of looking at those pieces? So our next meeting, I think, is
Monday?
The following Monday, the 20th, 22nd maybe? Where we're going to talk a little bit more about fees. We had some good conversation about class size the last time, and interventionists and supports. And so we are going to survey the staff to see how they feel about some of those things because we don't want to be necessarily putting a lot of energy into something that isn't important to the folks that are educating our kids each day, so.
Absolutely.
All right, let's look at Negotiations Subcommittee.
So the Negotiations Subcommittee, I'm happy to start. Allison and David, you are more than welcome to jump in if you'd like. So we met again last night with the Pembroke Teachers Association as we bargained successor agreements for all four of our contracts that cover five units. We have been meeting since January, so last night was our thirteenth bargaining session. That's a really long time. We are definitely starting to make some progress, but there's still a lot of outstanding issues across all four contracts and some universal proposals that have been made. So again, when we talked about this at the last meeting, it was in the context of whether or not we'd be releasing the hiring freeze. We are still not in a place where we have really gotten into the nitty-gritty about finances of the contract. We are still talking more about language shifts and changes that are of interest to the Pembroke Teachers Association as well as the Pembroke School Committee. We meet again on September 29. I am hopeful that we will continue to make progress, but we have definitely been meeting for eight, more than eight months at this point, so.
Yeah, I think we're scheduled basically to meet every other Monday with the idea that the other Monday, we're meeting as a team or they're meeting as a team to try to go through, because, you know, these documents are very lengthy and there's a lot of words on the pages, and a lot of colors now added to the pages, so edits that have been made. I feel like there's progress being made. We're close on one of the contracts, I think.
Yeah, so Unit C, our custodial contract, we're pretty close.
Yeah, so I think, you know, there's some, the numbers aren't all going to be filled in, but I think for when it comes to a lot of like the language of what, you know, they're looking for and what, you know, we're able to do and whatnot is fairly close. We still have a website?
Yep, it's still on, yep.
Okay, so we do have an updated, you know, as we're going through negotiations, we are keeping track on the website of what's been proposed and what.
I haven't loaded what we did Monday yet, but I'll do that tomorrow.
Yeah, so if anybody has any questions, or that's all on the website for the public to see.
I would just say, the conversations have been cordial. There's nothing angry, there's nobody yelling across the table, there's nobody throwing rocks or anything, so.
We didn't give you any rocks.
No, so in that sense, I appreciate the Pembroke Teachers Association, you know, bargaining in good faith. I think we're doing the same. I'm very confident that we'll get a deal done. I'm not going to say in a week or two, but hopefully soon, so. I think we joked about a date, November was kind of the little play on words, but I don't want to get in trouble.
Sure, and in fairness, I think not having settled contracts is a difficult place to be as you're about to start the conversations of a second fiscal year. You know, especially if conversations in that second fiscal year involve those of an operational override and really wanting to make sure that, you know, we are doing our due diligence as a school committee to represent the fiscal interests of the taxpayers in the town. We have spent an extensive amount of time on a particular article in the teacher's contract that centers around working conditions, working hours, and work responsibilities. And so as you can imagine, that is kind of the beast of the contract, that is the meat of what the teacher's contract has. So, you know, we have definitely gone back and forth and made some progress there. So I think once we're able to finish that article, the rest will come a little bit faster. So again, I share David's optimism, and we look forward to meeting again.
And last but not least, Vocational Planning Committee.
Love vocational planning. So prior to tonight's school committee meeting, we had our second vocational information session to share with the public the presentation that I had given back in April when you all voted to put the placeholder on the town meeting warrant and offer people an opportunity to ask questions. Again, the caveat that I gave tonight, and I will continue to give, is that I am happy to provide any information that I possibly can provide, answer any question that I can that folks have or direct you in the place to get the answer. But as a public employee, I am not allowed to campaign one way or the other. I can just share with you information about vocational education. In addition to the work with the information sessions, the Regional Planning Committee has been meeting to discuss the draft of a regional agreement. So to move forward for October 21 at town meeting and have that first of the three votes that we've talked about, the vote to join or to enter into a regional agreement with South Shore Tech, we have to have the language of that agreement worked out. In your packet is a draft of the regional agreement. There has been one edit of it that happened today in section line 407, where we're discussing the initial seat apportionment for the '27, '28 school year and how those seats would be considered for tuition. So there has been an adjustment there to what would be the average member tuition for those seats. So that was definitely what we had talked about at the Regional Planning Committee. So I'll circulate to you all the most up-to-date version of this. We have shared this with Copelman and Page, our, the town's legal counsel, so that they could correctly write the verbiage for the vote in the warrant. So that part is tentatively complete. We are just waiting for a final check from DESE to say that everything that we are proposing is in line with what they would be expecting. And as I said during the information session, we have been checking in with them all along. So they have seen this draft. The only change that they haven't seen is line 407 with the tuition amount in it. So once they give that the green light, we are good to go. The drop dead date to have this language complete so that it can print appropriately in the town meeting warrant is October 1. So we are on track for that.
And at what point are we drafting or has it already been drafted? What the language is going to be for the town meeting article?
So the town council did that this week, and they've created a draft for that. And then this full regional agreement would be printed in the appendices.
And do we see that before it goes, like who, like?
So it's pretty much the placeholder that we put on. What it, the only thing it delineates is the line numbers of the agreement. So we had put in a placeholder that was similar to the, that had the line numbers from the Marshall Town Warrant just to have a placeholder, but it does align with where the changes are that are associated with Pembroke in that the contingency for the dead exclusion and propositional two-and-a-half override. I'm happy to circulate that language to you all ahead of your next meeting, so we can talk about it if you want.
So the town warrant will have a lot of pages of all of this in it?
So we are Article Six, apparently, with the bingo balls. So Article Six will have the verbiage for the vote, and then this will be in the appendices.
And it's October 1, so this has to be?
It's ideally September 24, but if we're not ready for September 24, October 1 is the absolute last day that the Select Board can meet to vote on the warrant so that it can publish in time for the meeting on the 21st. I'm optimistic for the 24th because we're pretty close right now.
What is the, what are you, what's being still worked on?
So we were just working on the tuition rate for that first year before the new building, when we don't have a full allotment of students in the building. And the regional school committee for South Shore Tech has to vote on the language before we move it forward. So they have to agree to make the changes to the regional agreement before we can even offer it as a change. So they are tentatively scheduled to meet tomorrow night. Tom did put on their radar that if this didn't get the green light from DESE by that time of that meeting, that they would potentially have a very brief meeting in the next couple of days to move this forward.
Okay, let's look at future meeting dates and topics. What do we have in our calendars?
We have, what, the 7th and then the 21st being town meeting? So October 7th and October 21st, which is town meeting at 7 o'clock? So we meet at 6:00 or 6:30? What's our, town meetings at 7? Do we normally meet ahead of?
Yeah, you all usually just meet 30 minutes ahead of time. You should meet and stay in open session because it's possible you may have, be answering questions about VOTEC at town meeting. And so you want to be able to do that as a body as opposed to as an individual.
And do we think one business meeting is enough in October? Do we need to, we don't need to like hold the 28th or something?
No, I think that as we start to get into November and December, we might want to look at some additional dates as the budget process starts to pick up some speed. I know that Bill generally presents his first kind of pass at the budget in the beginning of November. I try to give you maintenance of effort in the beginning of November, so we have some work to do between now and then.
And we'll have enrollment numbers as a topic?
So you got October, enrollment numbers are done on October 1, so on 10/7, we'll discuss enrollment.
So is October 7, then what other dates?
October 21.
Town meeting, just town meeting.
All right, so our next meeting will be October 7.
At 6.
Here.
Yep.
Right?
Yep.
October 7.
I will be out of the state and country on both those dates for work, actually for bargaining.
What kind of fun place are you going?
Sunny, Canada, and then Tacoma, Washington. Both union bargaining.
Okay.
All right.
I feel like that's a missed opportunity to go somewhere better, Katrina.
I know, our unions are never in beautiful places.
Are you bad any time during October?
So it's just, our contracts are expiring all at the same time. So I'm going to be in Canada the week of the 6th. I leave on the 6th, and I'll be back on the 9th. And then Tacoma, I leave on the 20th, and I'll be back on the 22nd sometime at night.
Okay. Should we move forward with what we have, or did you want to?
I think we have to, because we have negotiations on the 14th.
Oh, right.
Because of the holiday, so I don't think we have the ability to move it.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure. I'm happy to kind of touch base with you afterwards and go through anything.
All right, thank you.
Sorry, I'm a slow guy here.
There, just to mention, if I can mention, the Workforce Development Forum, is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, so next Thursday on the 25th, the time I need to check.
Six to eight at the Pembroke Public Library.
Six to eight at the Pembroke Public Library. I should know because I'm going to be speaking on it, but thank you for the time. So there'll be union members there as well as Erin, myself, and several other folks in the chambers putting it on. So if you have questions about VOTEC or want to hear more about workforce development and why it's important, then come to that event.
Tom Vicki from South Shore Tech will be there as well, sharing a couple of presentations about their building project and where they're at.
Awesome.
Perfect, okay, any other comments? Okay, ladies and gentlemen, executive session pursuant to Chapter 30A, Section 21A 2 and 3 to discuss a personal service contract and strategy related to collective bargaining as an open meeting may have detrimental effect on the legal position of the school committee as declared by the chair. I need a roll call vote by person. Katrina to my left. Oh, we have to move, I'm sorry.
Second.
Okay. Sue and Allison going from left to right. Katrina?
Yes.
Yes, Sue?
Yes.
Me, yes.
Yes.
Yes, and yes, we have five again. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for coming. For those of you here for the early meeting, we truly appreciate you being here. Thank you so much.